Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Committee of the Whole for May 20, 2025. I call the order. Ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Betterman?
Yes, here.
Deanie?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Swansky?
Here.
President Gunstein?
Here.
That's going to take us to our Town Hall portion for Committee of the Whole. And tonight, because I know we have a lot of passionate people in here for two different, maybe three different subjects, I'm going to open up the first Town Hall portion of this for anybody that'd like to speak to something other than the Devon and Prospect or Starbuds Dispensary. And then, when I turn this over to Chairman Hopkins, we will open up the Town Hall portion for the individual subject. So, right now, Town Hall is open for anybody that would like to speak in regards to something outside of those two items. Do we have anybody that'd like to speak?
Yeah, one's coming.
Okay.
Good evening. The problem that I'm having is I live at 105 North Chase Avenue, and it's right on the corner of Chase and North Avenue. And there's semis keep roaring through here like crazy. Between eight o'clock and two o'clock in the morning, there's at least six to eight semis that rumble through here. And it's getting to be a real pain because you're sitting there watching TV, and it just sounds like thunder's coming out of this, coming out from behind you. And I talked to a few of the officers, and they said that they had been stopping these truck drivers and giving them fines of like $25 or something. Well, yeah, I think what you need to do is, I think you need to put a sign up for about $250 and put one on this side of Prospect and put one right here at the four-way stop to stop that from going on.
Thank you. Chief, do you have, I know we get a lot of calls about that area as well, so have you guys been looking into that?
Yeah, definitely. So, that is something that we're currently looking into. We are conducting a lot of extra traffic enforcement in that area. But one thing we're doing recently is looking at it from a signage perspective. So, we worked with Public Works. We met out at the intersection about a week and a half ago. Our Public Works is coordinating with Streamwood. We're looking at putting signs on North Avenue close to Lake Street so that they have an opportunity to turn around on Falcon Court before they actually get into our downtown area. And then, we're also looking on West Bartlett Road, west of 59, to put additional signage there so trucks see and know that they can't come into the downtown area unless it's for local deliveries. When we have those signs installed, we will do kind of a comprehensive approach to that whole intersection with the electronic message boards and increased traffic enforcement. And I think collectively, what we're recognizing is putting more of our efforts into preventing trucks from getting into the downtown area to begin with, instead of, once they're in the intersection, it's too late because they're already there. So, we will continue our enforcement efforts. We have done well over 100 extra patrols, but obviously, we recognize that there's more that we can do with that and...
They need to put a big gigantic sign right there by Prospect so that they can't come past that part of it. Because from Prospect this way is all residential. Prospect go the other way is nothing, and they got the truck place down the street that they can turn around in. I've been dealing with this for the last five months, and everybody keeps telling me the same crap. "Oh, yeah, we're checking into it. We're checking into it." But nobody's doing nothing about it. They need to put signs up and charge them $250. If that doesn't work, then double it. Charge them $500. Keep them the hell out of there, man. It's ridiculous.
We'll work with our police department to get our signage rectified.
That's what they've been saying for five, six months.
Oh, I know it's been an ongoing issue, and it's...
I'm a truck driver myself. I know what these trucks do to these streets. And to have this go on every night is ridiculous.
I understand your concern.
Sir, could I get your name?
I'm sitting there watching TV, and my TV starts vibrating off the wall because the truck's going through there.
Can we get your name and address?
Yeah, Russ Sandman, 105 North Chase Avenue.
Thank you. If you'd like to meet with one of our officers...
I live right on the corner of Chase and North Avenue.
If you'd like to meet with one of our officers, they'd be happy to, you know, come up with an idea and a plan with you. But I do appreciate your feedback, and I know it's something that's been an ongoing problem. So, appreciate it.
All right.
Sir, one of our deputy chiefs can meet with you in the hallway.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else that'd like to address the board tonight? All right. Yes? All right.
Good evening. How are you guys doing? My name is Adrian Soto. I actually live not too far from where that gentleman is, 103 Daniel Court, Unit A. I'm actually here because the problem with the permits is, it's good and all, but kind of leaves me in a bad spot because as of right now, since we're having this conversation, I have nowhere to park. I've already come and spoke to three different officers, one yesterday, the officer named Joe Mondia, can't think of the third lady. In regards to, well, I've already gotten tickets for two inches of snow after getting the permit, right? Because I can't park, I don't have additional parking. I got one for being too close to the stop sign. Well, I'll be honest, that's my fault, right? I don't know any better. Fine. I'll bite the bullet in that one. But there's no parking, man. Like, there's... I had to park my car in North Avenue. The officer that I spoke to last night was kind enough to say, "Hey, man, you know what? That's my area. I get it. There's no parking. Get a free pass tonight," basically. But what was the point of me getting the permit if I have nowhere to park? So, I guess I'm kind of at my wit's end with some of this stuff. I thought I'd actually do the big boy thing and actually come and speak about it instead of doing something that'll get me in trouble, right?
I appreciate that.
So, I guess this is kind of my pitch to you guys, like, what is it that I can do at this point?
Can we get your name and address?
Sure. Adrian Soto. A-D-R-I-A-N-S-O-T-O.
Chief, how have you guys been?
Your address?
Is this an ongoing thing that you guys have been dealing with?
Address.
No, not that I'm aware of. I know we still have additional permits available as well. So, I'll have Deputy Chief Sweeney meet with the gentleman in the hallway if he's, if you're willing to do that, and we can discuss a solution for you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was it 103 what?
Daniel Court.
Daniel Court.
Unit A.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He'll meet you in the hall in the back there. All right. Any other, anyone else would like to speak? All right. That closes the Town Hall portion of the meeting, and we will now go to standing committee reports. First standing committee report, building and zoning, Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Gunstein. We have three items on our agenda. The first is 2025-03 Devon Rezoning. The petitioner is requesting to rezone the 1.12 acre property known as 27 West 637 West Devon Avenue from Bill, from the B2 Local Convenience Shopping District to the ER2 Estate Residence District. The Plan and Zoning Committee reviewed the application, conducted the required public hearing, and recommended approval of the rezoning at their May 1st, 2025 meeting. I think this is pretty straightforward. Does anyone have any questions regarding this? You will send this...
That said, I will open it up to Town Hall if anybody would like to comment on that particular item. If not, I will close Town Hall on that, and we will send this off to the Plan or the Board for approval.
Send this on to the Board for a vote. The next item is 2018-5 TLE Devon and Prospect. The petitioner is requesting to subdivide the 3.85 acre located at the southwest corner of Devon and Prospect avenues to construct the learning experience, early learning education and daycare facility on Lot 1, and either a standalone restaurant or two small retail buildings on Lot 2. Lot 3 contains stormwater detention for the entire development and will be built at the same time as TLE. Planning and Zoning Commission held the public hearing at their May 1st, 2025 meeting and heard the comments and concerns raised by the surrounding property owners. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the petitioner's request. With that, I will turn it over to staff for any other comments.
Chairman Hopkins? I want to go into a little bit of background on this property. This property has been zoned commercial for many years. As trustee Hopkins stated, that this is a three-lot subdivision. Lot 1 is going for final approval. It includes a daycare experience and will also include detention at the southwest corner of the site. The petitioner has requested, oh, the building elevations have been upgraded to give it a more residential feel. Because this is going through the planning process and the village board, we do have a little bit more flexibility in getting some upgraded building materials and the gabled roof. For Phase 2, the petitioner has submitted two preliminary plans. One is for a retail building that includes a drive-through. The building is oriented towards Devon and Prospect intersection to keep the building and dumpster enclosures as far away from the homeowners as possible. The second phase is for a restaurant, again, located at the northeast corner of the site with an outdoor patio. The landscaping exceeds the village's requirements. And again, as I said, this is zoned commercial because they are requesting the drive-through and a restaurant with liquor. That's part of the reason why this is going through the village board approval process. The B3 zoning district allows a number of uses. If someone came in for a proposal on the site with any of the permitted uses listed, the daycare, a grocery store, a restaurant without liquor, any of those buildings that include apartments on the second floor, as long as they meet the building setbacks, our parking requirements, and have a minimum of 20% open space, that is something that staff would approve administratively and would not need to go through this process. Part of the reason why this is going through the public hearing process is because of the liquor and the drive-through establishment and the planned unit development for a little bit of flexibility. So, this petition has about 44% open space. So, this is significantly more landscaping than what would normally be required. For comparison, this was a previously approved site plan for the property that includes a retail strip where the building was at the southwest corner of the site, and there's about seven dumpster enclosures located to the rear of the building. This is also where all the loading would have been. This is something that could be approved now. This meets all of our requirements.
That would not have to go through a public hearing. It would not have to come before this committee or the Board, and this could be approved immediately.
Correct. So, and other properties that are, have similar lot size in the village would be the goodwill that you see down on Route 59 is about this size. That's only about 24% open space, if you look at their lot. To the northeast, Devon and Prospect is another property that's about, it's a little bit bigger. It has a lot more open space because there's an unbuiltable gas pipeline to the rear of the building. But that's just to kind of give you an idea of why this is before the village board and why it went through the public hearing process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here tonight? Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the petitioner from the Board?
Well, I think there's been some concerns about the pedestrian entrances into the shopping center and the daycare and the proposed bike path on Prospect and how that's all going to work together. So, could we perhaps address that?
Well, just recently, staff has brought up the issue of hopefully trying to find a way to create access to the bike path and/or the sidewalks, and I said I'm more than willing to do the same. I believe our, if you even look on there, Lot 2 shows a sidewalk coming in off the bike path right adjacent to the main access road that goes through. That's that little sidewalk, just like being stubbed in for future connection, depending on what, which plan we go with. It would obviously be completed at that point. And I said that I'm, I have no issue with trying to find pedestrian access to the TLE Early Education Facility. It will probably be straight into the sidewalk, but which will require some adjustments and revisions to the landscape plan. But I'm assuming that should be not a problem to work out.
Okay. Any other?
I just echo what Renee says. Was there any kind of signage, like, so the right-in, right-out? Is there any kind of signage since it is a bike path there?
We can have them put signage in. They are putting in striping, so it's very obvious for the drivers that that is a crosswalk, which is pretty standard. We can have them put in a sign as well.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
That's why I think what I've heard from residents is just kind of the, you know, after the fact, when things are here, kind of monitoring, you know, what's happening, what needs to be made safer or changed is what I was hearing.
No. We want to be a good partner with the community. We want it to be a safe place for people to walk or bike or whatever and patronize the facilities that we will be building. We understand those concerns, and whatever is reasonable, we will definitely entertain. So, if there's things that come up throughout the construction process or development process, we will, you know, be more than willing to consider that and work with the staff.
And then, out of curiosity, have you had any leads as to a quick service or restaurants or the thoughts on that?
You know, I have spoken to a couple potential prospects. It's still early. A lot of them want to see where we end up as far as approvals go before they focus hard on the, on the location because they're looking at multiple sites around Chicago. But I feel, once we have our approvals and we have something definitive to market, at least on a preliminary basis, we will find the proper users for the location and be able to pick a direction, whether it be the restaurant, you know, family or full-service restaurant, or the retail service-oriented development with a potential QSR with the drive-through. And again, I think most of us are not surprised, ever since COVID, any new type of restaurant or quick-service restaurant won't even, won't consider a site without a drive-through these days. So, that's why we ask for that special use. For the site to be successful and attractive to the right users, we need to have that, and they prefer to have that approval upfront rather than waste time trying to get that approval on their own. It makes us more successful in attracting better users. As you can see, we have a 14-car stacking as well, and it's all wrapped around the backside along the intersection there, Prospect and Devon.
And is it intended that they could go out either way, like, if they have to turn right or if they have to go turn left onto Prospect to get back to Devon?
Yeah, they could go either direction, but obviously, it's not a, it's only a right-in, right-out on Devon.
Any other comments from the committee? Want to open it up to public hearing?
I am going to open the Town Hall portion of it. And again, I want to reiterate, this Town Hall portion is strictly for the TLE Devon and Prospect development, and go ahead and...
Suzanne Duffy?
I wasn't able to attend the meeting on May 1st. I was out of town. I had written a letter, my husband and I had written a letter with our concerns. We never received any kind of response, and the people that we know that attended it said our letter was not announced to, they said there was a letter, but our concerns were not addressed. So, I'm going to say my concerns to you regarding, my biggest concern, I back up to, I live on Lido Trail, and I'm concerned about the landscaping and privacy for my yard. Will there, I understand there's not going to be fencing, so I'm concerned about the type of landscaping you're going to put in. Is it going to be deciduous, which will be bare for six months at least of the year, or are there going to be evergreens? And will they be healthier evergreens planted at the beginning of the project? Because, you know, it'll be 10 years or more before anything is filled in and provides privacy. The other, another thing was the outdoor lighting. With something like this for a daycare, is that, do they have the lighting on all night long, the security or the parking lighting? The same thing for restaurants, if it's going to be a restaurant or I understand some kind of, you know, retail store. I would ask that it not be a store that sells liquor because I think we have enough liquor purchase possibilities within a mile of that location. And there, so you're saying that if this gets approved through your committee, then you, the other possibility for the property is, will that, we won't be able to question anything or, or if, like, right now, they're saying it could be a drive-through restaurant or a seated restaurant, you know, like, will we have anything to input regarding that once it's, I mean, if the daycare's done and then we get building on the other thing, we won't be able to have any input?
No.
No.
Unless they have a special use request. If an individual tenant had a special use request, then that would require a public hearing.
My concern too would be the hours of operation. You know, restaurants typically in Bartlett don't stay open, you know, past nine o'clock-ish or so. So, you know, and if there's outdoor seating, you know, would that carry into our homes and stuff? So, timing is a concern, so.
Could we write into the ordinance hours of operation for a retail, or a retail restaurant with a drive-through?
Let's let her finish real quick. Do you have anything more you'd like to add?
I also wanted, Fred, are we, is this drive-through restaurant thing, are we talking about a franchise or what are we talking about here? Do we know?
I don't believe we have a tenant associated with this project currently, so this is a speculation.
I mean, because if you're putting a McDonald's there or something like, I mean, it just doesn't make sense.
I don't think McDonald's would be looking...
It doesn't fit in, you know, the residential...
Right. I agree with you. I don't think McDonald's is looking at operating our downtown Bartlett.
Well, you know, that's just an example, but yeah.
But I appreciate it, Suzanne.
Okay.
I have a clarification, though. I thought there was a fence.
There is. There is a fence that goes on the road.
All right. Rebecca Hunt?
My name's Rebecca Hunt. I live at 228 Lido Trail with my husband and my two young children. We're Lot 1 there at the corner of Lido and Prospect. And we understand the development, but we do request that you consider where the development is, that it's 100% residential, and it's within walking distance of downtown. And we simply ask that the special provisions for the project not be approved and that you do consider and reevaluate the safety of those entrances to the property, and I'll clarify what I'm saying here. So, you did mention the pedestrian traffic and the bicycle path, and I do appreciate that. I feel like a drive-through at that location simply does not make sense. A restaurant, perhaps, drive-through in a pedestrian residential area, just, it doesn't promote the pedestrian value in the community. And according to the traffic study, the drive-through would increase weekday traffic more than a restaurant alone. The traffic volume would increase by 620 vehicles, which would decrease the safety of the walkways there and discourage pedestrians from accessing the local amenities downtown. Residents in the East Point Estates were attracted there due to its safe, quiet, peaceful attributes, a great place to raise a family, not a place for a convenience store or restaurant with a liquor license. We're a small neighborhood, and the homes of the older residents are turning over to younger families, and we feel that a venue selling alcohol is inappropriate in such close proximity to the homes of young children. The CDC and the NIH both recognize sufficient evidence of a positive association between the number of alcohol outlets and alcohol-related harms, including loitering and theft. Not that that would happen, but as was already said, those are already available in the area. We would prefer not to have it in our backyards. Outdoor seating also does not contribute to the peace and quiet of the neighborhood. We've already talked about the operating hours. We would appreciate not having late operating hours. On a warm summer's evening, people enjoy lingering outdoors and voices travel, especially at night. I recently drove through the downtown past the new brewery, and there were many people milling about at 9:00 PM, and it was great for the downtown, but not desirable in a residential area. In the development application, the developer states the plans include commercial uses that are not currently available in the immediate vicinity, but liquor, outdoor seating, and a convenience store are all available within a few minutes' walk of this location. In the same application, the village requires that the proposal and not plan to be injurious to the use and enjoyment of or be incompatible with other property in the immediate vicinity, but it does injure the use and enjoyment of our property. For one, the configuration of the buildings and parking lots proposed, it reduces the privacy, especially for residents in Lots 1, 2, and 3 on Lido Trail. The buildings and the parking lots would face current residences so that they have no privacy in the rear of their homes. Phase 2 plans provide no additional buffer. It does provide the trees, and I understand that the fence is not a privacy fence. So, there is limited privacy there for the first three homes on Lido.
Thank you. We exceeded the three minutes on that. We're just trying to fit everybody in tonight, so I'm, I appreciate it, Rebecca. And so, the next speaker is going to be Addy. We have a lot of speakers tonight, so we're going to be pretty, draw a hard line on the three-minute, so I appreciate your willingness to follow that.
My name is Addy, and I am 11 years old, and I'm in fifth grade, and I live at 409 Hillendale Drive, and I am asking our village trustees to save the field. This is important to me because I would like it, like, open because there is, like, a bunch of kids in our neighborhood, and I like it open because, like, there's room for me to do, like, my small archery stuff that I have. But the other people that might be affected by the plan is 31 other kids in my neighborhood. So, this, these new buildings and traffic may make my neighborhood and the places where I live and play less open, and we like to do crazy, big, open-space stuff.
Thank you, Addy. Thank you for doing that.
Good job.
Heather Matthews?
Hello. Thank you all. So, my name is Heather Matthews. I live at 409 Hillendale Drive, and so I back up to the lot there. I want to take some issues that were, take some time to address issues that were dismissed by the zoning board in particular. So, first, I want to let you know that due process was not followed. There were people who asked to speak at the zoning meeting and were not given chances to as well. So, I just want to make sure you're aware of that. There were also mischaracterizations and misrepresentations of the issues residents raised, and the residents were denied the opportunity to clarify what they meant when they asked to. So, I wanted to make sure you're aware. Second, we were repeatedly told that we should have known that something would be built there. And yes, something, something will be built there, but the request is for things that are not allowed in the current zoning plan. And so, because of that, we couldn't have known that a liquor license would have been requested or a fast food and a drive-through and things like that. We, that you can't say we should have known that. I also want to know that, note that the increased traffic in the area was something raised in the village actual report, but the village did not raise it in the meeting and stated there were no concerns. And so, the traffic study said that there actually could be an issue, especially post-COVID and with the increased development traffic near the Aldi, we see dramatically increased pedestrian traffic, bike traffic, and roadway traffic. We need a bike study, like, a pedestrian study and a, and a new traffic study of that area. Overall, what we really need is an enhanced safety plan for the Devon Avenue corridor from the CVS to Devon and Prospect. We've been asking for that. We've been contacting you for several years, asking for that, ever since Cherry on Top Wouldn Place. It's become an increasing issue. Great that we have the development, but this will cause a lot of problems. Furthermore, the, when cars are, because it's a right-in, right-out, and it's on the east side of town, it's largely, everybody's going to be going west for the most part when they're leaving that facility. And so, when, since it's a right-in, right-out, what that means is they're most likely, just like by the McDonald's, they're going to go around the block in our subdivision. We have, I have... have 13 girls within a three-house radius of me, under the age of 12. They are running kids between the ages of even younger kids, four and 10 are running back and forth across the street constantly, and we are seeing and, you know, because they go house to house. It's like Mayberry. It's great that our kids can come home when the streetlights come on, but we need it to be safe. We can't have more cars racing through. We already have cars trying to cut the stoplight, and so that's quite an issue. And then the retention pond would also create a drowning risk, and I want to make sure you guys are aware of that, too. There's major safety issues with all of these things, and I know none of you, as parents, would want that on your conscience if those things were in your backyard or if something did happen here. As a PICU nurse, I can tell you, those things do happen.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak to this petition? Is it the audience or online? Anybody online?
This is Brian at 228 Lido Trail. I'd like to speak.
Brian. Go ahead, Brian.
Okay. Thank you. So much has already been said tonight. It seems obvious that what has been proposed at Devon and Prospect should be rejected. The surrounding neighbors, especially the mothers, have clearly stated that they don't want this. It is not that they don't want anything built there. It is that they want a development that is conducive to families who surround the property. When I thought about this, I couldn't help but come to mind the movie It's a Wonderful Life. You remember Bedford Falls and Pottersville? When I picture drive-throughs, liquor license, convenience stores, and parking lots facing our homes, I think of Pottersville.
Do you have anything else? Okay. We'll assume he was done. I have one more in the crowd. Please step up, sir, and state your name and address.
My name is Patrick Rowan. I live on 221 Lido Trail, across the street from the houses that are backed up to this proposed, the proposed buildings. I'm personally not opposed to anything being built there. It's the the liquor license and the the drive-through. You know, my son, 10-year-old son sitting there, he his window overlooks that back area, and, you know, I understand when things happen, and if you have a liquor license, you're going to want to have later hours. You're probably going to want to have an outdoor seating area, which is proposed. What else is going to be out there? Live music, televisions, TVs? That's a lot of noise. You know, what comes with that? I partied hard in college and stuff as well, and, you know, people saying stupid things, people doing stupid things out in the open, and, you know, my son's window can see into that area. And I just don't think it's appropriate for that type of establishment. Maybe a more low-key restaurant, maybe retail, like you said, but I think the liquor license and restaurant that the types of restaurants that go along with the liquor license would be not appropriate for our neighborhood. And the drive-through I do worry about as well with increased traffic, cars idling in that area, the noise associated with that. It just, you know, we have families, something can go there, but a restaurant with a liquor license and all of the things that come along with that, I think, is inappropriate.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak to the TLE Devon and Prospect proposal? If not, I'm going to close the hearing. All right. That said, I just want to add a couple of things as a follow-up to that. A liquor license would need to come back before us for this proposed use, correct?
Any additional liquor license would have to come before the board.
And the liquor licenses are required to follow the hours that are tied to the approved liquor license?
Yes, each liquor license has different hours, but they'd have to comply with the specific license they apply for.
Okay. And we have a newly implemented sound ordinance within our community, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we do. We have this road that is Devon is a DuPage County road. Is that correct?
DeFryda.
And DuPage County will be reviewing all of the plans by the petitioner prior to permit approval to ensure that the egress is appropriate and meets the standards, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clear those few items up. One of the speakers had mentioned a fence. Was a fence part of the design element of this site?
There is a fence. It's a decorative fence along the south side because of the depth of the landscape area. They're not required to put in a privacy fence.
Okay. And then the landscaping needs to conform with our standards or exceed our standards, so it sounds like they do, and I believe there's birmingham in there, correct?
There is not birmingham because of the drainage.
Oh, because of the drainage.
Drainage.
That's all I wanted to add as a as a takeaway from the speakers, but I'll turn it back over to Trustee Hopkins.
Thank you, President Gunstein. I have one question for the petitioner. If we decided against the drive-through portion of it, would you still proceed with this development?
I think it makes the retail plan much less desirable, to be honest with you. I think we're trying to, you know, put in place enough characteristics that will allow us to track quality-type users. Just a traditional retail strip like you see Kitty Corner, and ours is going to be a lot more attractive than the one across the street. I can tell you that much architecturally and otherwise. But it reduces our prospects to have a successful retail project, which then limits us to maybe more just the restaurant option. And again, we're trying to maintain some flexibility to create a successful overall project and find the highest and best users we can, so.
Thank you. Ms. Stone, what are new sound ordinance that we have in in town? How would that relate to someone going through a drive-through and talking into a speaker?
That was the reason why we had the drive-through oriented the way that we did, so that the speaker boxes and everything would be on the opposite side of the building. So it's something that we would definitely be able to enforce with the current ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from the committee?
Just one, real quick one. I'd like to address the 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 issue of the fence. There's a decorative fence there now?
That's what's proposed on the plan.
Yeah.
Is more of an ornamental fence.
Well, maybe we could take a look at upgrading the fence for a little more privacy. Just a thought. We've dealt with that in the past. You know that, so.
You can ask the petitioner if that's something that they'd be willing.
Would the petitioner be receptive to that?
Well, first, let me just clarify that behind the early education preschool facility is a six-foot privacy vinyl fence. That's their requirement for the playground. They don't want people looking through the fence to the kids playing. From there, it transitions to the more ornamental, just barrier fence, so to speak, not a high privacy. Because of what Christie pointed out, there's a 20-foot landscape buffer that's being heavily landscaped, so therefore, as it matures, I think it creates a nice vista looking out onto the property and surrounding the the planted detention pond, which will have wildflowers and whatever. That's part of that mix, that seed mix.
Answered my question.
We can, we can explore it, yes.
I like the idea about the buffering with the vegetation and whatnot. Answered my question. I'm happy with what you said.
Okay.
Could staff talk about the detention pond? Is it dry?
It's the wet button where it just has a couple inches of water. It's not going to be something like a pond that's sitting there.
Last week, we had, or last meeting, we had the petitioner's residents from the neighborhood buy McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts state that one of the things that we'll discuss in the next session, that they liked that their children could walk to McDonald's and walk to Dunkin' Donuts. Have we had any complaints from that neighborhood about two drive-throughs? Very similar neighborhood.
I mean, I wasn't here when those were built, so I can't I can't attest to what complaints came up dur if there were any issues raised during the public hearing process for that, but I'm not aware of any complaints from current residents and their kids accessing that development.
Okay.
Is there any other questions?
No.
All right. We will send this on to the village board for a final vote at the next meeting, and anything that we talked about, if staff wants to work with the petitioner on some modifications, that would be great. And will this be at our next meeting?
Correct.
All right. All right. We'll move on to our next, our third item, which is 2025-4, which is Starbucks dispensary. The petitioner is requesting a special use permit to allow an adult-use dispensary at 801 South Route 59 in the Brewster Creek Shopping Center. The petitioner is also proposing to open a bakery selling hemp-infused products at 803 South Route 59. This use is permitted by right and does not involve cannabis-infused products. The Planning and Zoning Commission held the public hearing at their May 1st, 2025 meeting, and heard comments and concerns raised by the surrounding property owners and received a petition objecting to the request. The Planning and Zoning Commission's motion to recommend approval of the petitioner's request failed to pass with a 3-5 vote. A special use permit which fails to receive a positive recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission requires a vote of at least four trustees in favor of the application to pass. With that, is there anything that any committee member would like to talk about first? Christie, would you like to add anything?
So I do want to say that your packet does include the applicant's PowerPoint presentation that they gave regarding the security concerns, the packaging concerns, how they manage the site on a daily basis. I do also want to reemphasize that the bakery itself is a permitted use, so that is not under your review today. The only thing is the special use request for the dispensary in that unit.
Thank you. Is the petitioner here?
Yes.
Would you like to add anything?
Good evening. We are eager to get going in Bartlett and work with the village to open up our dispensary in the most in the safest manner possible to enable the users of Bartlett to partake in the business. Right now, based on our research, there is between 5,900 and 7,900 users, both medical and recreational in Bartlett, and they are going outside today. And so we like to, you know, work with you all and 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 operate a very safe and sound dispensary in the area.
How long have you been an operator in this state of Illinois?
The state of Illinois is two and a half years.
Two and a half years. Have you had any complaints and police visit your sites, any lawsuits or anything of that nature?
No.
Okay. Is there any questions to the petitioner or for the petitioner?
I don't have a question for the petitioner. I just wanted to add that I did ask the village to look at other dispensaries and see if there's any other reports, and there were none at other ones, including the other locations that you operate.
We have obviously significant security, and it's a deterrent, right? I mean, and so, and everybody's ID-proved. You know, there is two layers, two layers of entry. You know, you go into the dispensary, there's nothing there. There's a lobby with a desk and a and a security guard, and they ID-proof anyone in before you can actually go into a safe sales floor, which is not visible from anywhere outside. So it's a very safe operation. Most dispensaries in the in the state of Illinois operate that way, so.
Thank you.
I I do have a few questions for the petitioner. What is the percentage of online sales to your facility versus people coming in and shopping when it comes to strictly the dispensary?
I would say about 50% is online orders.
50% is online orders. And how does that process work, just to educate us up here?
So the way the online order works is people obviously log into their to Dutch our online platform, place the order. We process it, and they come and pick it up. You know, it's like a 15, 20-second kind of pickup because it's already pre-processed, and then they come in, we check their IDs, and it's processed. The the regular customers who come in, non-online customers, which is walk into the store, the average transaction time is about two and a half minutes.
Okay. And how does your security team work within the facility? Are they outside or are they inside?
They're inside and outside, you know, so they're inside to begin with. They also check all the outside and the surrounding areas, you know, within a certain distance. And they ensure that everyone who walks into the facility is, you know, works with one of us and gets their ID-proved, and they are the ones who let them in to the facility, into the store.
Okay. There has been concerns that were brought up regarding the smell in the parking lot, and I've reached out to other dispensaries, and I just wanted to see how that is being addressed or has had to be addressed in the past.
We have not experienced any complaints about smell in the parking lot. You know, all of our, all of our products are packaged in a childproof packaging, and people typically don't, they pick up their product and leave, and they and they smoke or vape in other places. They don't do it in our facility or in the parking lot. We don't allow that.
Okay. The ventilation system that you have within your facility, what is that ventilation system used for?
The ventilation system is used to ensure that, you know, the temperature and the humidity levels are maintained properly so that the product, you know, we have, all the product is in a safe, you know, at the back.
Okay.
And that we need to make sure that there's ambient temperature and humidity controls to to preserve the product.
So is it filtered properly to ensure that the smell like a like a barbecue restaurant would have is filtered out?
Yes, there is no cooking. First of all, there is absolutely no cooking in the dispensary.
Is your hemp-infused product being cooked there?
No, that's a separate business. It's not, nothing is happening in the dispensary. It's a pure retail organization. It's a pure retail shop. Product is sourced from third parties. They're brought in, just like any other retail, and they're they're sold over the counter.
Okay. I have a question for staff on the limitations of signage in the windows or LED lighting around the windows, such as liquor stores and CBD shops have. Are there any restrictions within our ordinance that prevent that?
They are not, but those are things that could be included as conditions.
I'd like to see that kind of added into a condition should this get approved. I'm just, I'm, I'd like to add that the the window framing lighting be added in the event that this, if this does get approved. So does anybody have any?
Does that go for everything in the strip mall?
I don't know what that, it does not. I mean.
So, I mean, because we have a liquor store, we have gambling, we have a vape store, all in the same.
Yeah. So how do you advertise your business? That leads me to that question.
We don't, advertising happens online and through texting, you know, and we basically have promotions, and people just like, you know, through, it's basically online at this point in time.
What, what is regulated for signage by the state?
You know, we cannot, obviously, all sign, none of our signage is going to talk about the products. It's just going to say Starbucks, and that's all it's going to say. Now open, or great deals, or, you know, you know, just some very benign marketing language, right? It's not going to talk about cannabis or any such thing. It is just going to talk about the fact that we are there, and please come visit us, and and nothing, nothing more than that. We absolutely do not have, we will not talk about our, what products or what our prices are or anything like that in any signage, external signage. It's all online, and people get their messages on their phones, and then and that's how they, the shop.
State law, just to clarify that as well, state law says that they can't use the image of a canvas leaf in any advertising.
Yes.
Can't have any advertising that's designed to appeal to minors or things of that nature.
We don't use any of that, so.
Okay. That was all the questions I had for you. I don't know if any of the rest of the board does, so. Any other questions for the petitioner? We can open it up to the public hearing. Thank you. Now open the public hearing and
Just public comment, just public comment.
Just public comments regarding Starbucks dispensary proposal. We, our first speaker will be Danielle Gary Burton. And again, in efforts to try to get through all of these, we ask that you please respect the three-minute timeline, and we can get through everybody. Thank you.
the three-minute timeline, and we can get through everybody. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here to speak with you tonight. Right here in my hand, I have a copy of the petition that I was able to obtain from the Academy for Kids Childcare Center. These parents were over 60 people who are in protest to having a StarBuds cannabis dispensary in that location. I also have additional ordinances and pictures of other cannabis dispensaries that are located in DuPage County, none of which at this time, I'd like to remind everyone, are located next to any daycare center, nowhere in DuPage County. So at this time, I'd like to present that to you. Good evening. I speak today not in opposition of legalization of cannabis, or any kind of regulated cannabis for that matter, but I'm here to raise serious legal and public safety concerns regarding the potential placement of an adult-use cannabis dispensary near Brewster Creek Kinder Care. As a municipality, the Village of Bartlett has both a legal obligation and a moral responsibility to anticipate and mitigate foreseeable risks, especially when those risks involve children. The proximity of cannabis business to childcare center, even if compliant with minimal state requirements, present a known risk. Discarded edible packaging, residual THC products, and increased foot traffic, these are not theoretical dangers. These are documented in cases across the country where children have fallen ill due to accidental exposures near such facilities. Now, some may argue there's no documented police report here in Bartlett linking cannabis dispensaries to harm, but the lack of police reports should not be mistaken for lack of risk. In legal terms, absence of evidence is not evidence of absence. The standard is not whether harm has occurred, it's whether harm was foreseeable and preventable. If a child were to be sickened by improperly discarded product, the village could face litigation, not only against the business, but against the government that allowed it to open near a childcare center, especially if it's shown the board was aware of the concern, aware of the location, and it failed to act. Courts in Illinois have held municipalities liable where zoning decisions contributed to foreseeable harm and where safeguards were inadequate or ignored. Now, let's consider the proposed safeguards. Internal and external security cameras provided by the business is commendable.
I'm going to give you five seconds to wrap up. We're over the three minutes.
In closing, the issue before us is not just about business development, it's about legal exposure, ethical governance, and proact, protection of our children. The village should not put itself in a position where it defend preventable harm in court.
Good evening. My name is Richard Lewis, 868 Braintree Lane. My wife and I have lived in Bartlett for 35 years. Quite honestly, I'm not 100% sure we're to talk about this proposal or the Devon Prospect proposal, as it's very much related. I'm kind of going off script here, but after hearing that other discussion, many of the neighbors actually were around, not myself, when the strip mall was built behind us, much like the location here. And at the same time, the Village Board gave the same type of assurances that I just heard here, which was if something comes in that requires special use, alcohol use, alcohol, liquor license and things, basically what I heard you here say today was that we're here to protect and prevent that type of thing happening in the strip mall in the future. Well, Brewster Creek is a perfect example of where that has failed to happen over time. So as elected folks here and as one of us here in the community, I know you're here to raise children, invest in a community that we love, and that responsibility is placed in your hands to help in the long-term well-being of our residents and neighbors. A cannabis dispensary within a couple of hundred feet of not one, but two daycare centers and directly adjacent to a residential neighborhood undermines the character, safety, and values of this community. It invites safety and security risk, unpleasant and potential, harmful air pollution, unnecessary traffic, and a shift in the tone that does not need to exist in spaces designed and zoned for young children and families. I'm going to address a little bit off-script here as well about the odors. I'm sorry if the petitioner evidently has never been in one of his own dispensaries if he thinks there is no smell in those closed packages. If you ever have been into a safety vault in one of these dispensaries, if it did not have fumed toads, you wouldn't be able to stand in there due to the odor. That is a fact. You'll hear claims, it's compliant, it's profitable, it's regulated. I can tell you there's not one single dispensary in the state that has not had some regulatory issues. It may not be legal issues, but regulatory issues happen all the time. And quite frankly, that's to be expected of businesses. I can't say that that's, you know, something that every business is going to be perfect. What it is about is is an appropriate location. When regulatory security issues arise, and they will, do we as a village protect our children and residents from detrimentally being impacted? It starts with prevention, and prevention starts with looking at the proximity of the dispensaries to sensitive areas such as schools, daycare centers, and residential areas. In the packet that was put together for the committee, it is noted that the following villages have ordinances requiring at least 1,000 feet buffer between adult-use dispensary and a daycare center: Naperville, Downers Grove, Lombard, Wheaton, Villa Park, West Chicago, Bensonville, Addison, and yes, Bartlett.
Smith, 741 Duxbury Lane. I'm here on behalf of the daycare director of Kindercare, Kayla Scarmigella. She wanted to share her speech that was given to the Planning and Zoning Committee on May 1st, 2025 regarding the dispensary being put in. I've given Linda Smith permission to read this letter. I'm Kayla Scarmigella, and I'm actually the center director of this childcare we keep talking about. So I want to give you guys a face to kind of go with this big looming childcare center. I currently house 120 children in my center and 115 on a daily basis. I asked my parents, how do you feel about this? Because this is your community. Quite a few of my parents are not thrilled with the thought of having a dispensary and a bakery so close to their children, because yes, things get dropped. We understand that. I clean liquor bottles up from the liquor store that's a little bit further down. My concern in when the bakery comes and I have immunocompromised children that have asthma and the smoke that's coming through the air that we already have to be questionable about. We check the UV, we check the air quality, we keep eyes on that because these are our little precious people. The next thing is the traffic. I'm so petrified when my kiddos get off the bus just from normal traffic of McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts, and when you're telling me an additional 35 cars in an hour, 75, 70 total an hour. I, on average, have four yellow buses that drop off every day, not including the six buses that run and my two buses, and that's not including the pickup and drop-off time and those little kids running out to their cars. We have so much parent traffic that our parents park on the median by the McDonald's, and they walk across because sometimes there's just not enough parking. And with all of this increased traffic, that just runs the risk of one of my little people or a parent getting hit, and that scares the ever-living daylights out of me. So I'm just asking, not there, not two doors down from my little people. There's a cross by, there, there's an area across by McMase or even Bannerman's. There are so many other options in Bartlett other than two doors down. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn DeSchmidt. Robin Cammerer.
Good evening. My name is Robin Cammerer. I am the widow of Michael Cammerer, former Bartlett trustee, and I live at 1,000 Auburn Lane. I've lived in Bartlett for 33 years. My husband and I have owned two houses. We moved from Bartlett to Bartlett, and two rental properties in Bartlett. We raised three boys here, and they attended local schools from kindergarten through eighth grade. I've attended village church in Bartlett for 33 years. I'm currently a member of BC3, which is a nonprofit organization that partners with the Bartlett Police Department and the Village of Bartlett. I loved raising my family here. I love living here. I love my neighbors, my neighborhood, and I am committed to Bartlett. I strongly oppose the proposed cannabis dispensary for the following reasons. The shopping center abuts directly to a residential neighborhood with very little buffer. The cannabis dispensary would be located one store away from a daycare center. Housed in the center are our village's most vulnerable residents. 35 additional cars per hour would be coming in and out of the shopping center that already has a high-traffic McDonald's restaurant, and I have a very real concern over safety. The business owner has said that people entering the store have their IDs checked three times. There are security guards on the premises at all times. There are cameras in the store and on top of the store that are monitored by state police. What clientele are they expecting to be going in and out of the store to shop there, that they are spending that kind of money to surveil? The proposed location is one and a half blocks from Beaver Pond. In the warm weather months, families are walking, riding bikes, and fishing at the pond. Many times, kids walk from the park to McDonald's, Taylor Street, or Walgreens, and would walk right past the clients this business is spending so much money to monitor. As the widow of a former business owner and former trustee, I am well aware of the difficult choices you are faced with. You often need the wisdom of Solomon to balance the very real business, interests of business, and what is best, in the best interest for our town and its residents. The Bartlett Village motto used to be "Progress with Pride." I know our former town presidents and the trustees took that motto to heart and supported the family-friendly businesses that made the Village of Bartlett the thriving and safe community it is today. Is a cannabis dispensary progress with pride? Please uphold the Planning Commission's 5-3 vote against rezoning. When making this decision, please take into consideration continuing to make the Bartlett, the Village of Bartlett, a Progress with Pride Village. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Russ Salmon. I believe he was for the TLE earlier. Jim Harrington.
I just put in a TLE. He spoke about that. Good evening. My name is Jim Harrington, 757 Braintree Lane. I am here as a 38-year Bartlett resident and very concerned about the location of the StarBuds dispensary. I would like to respond to the common arguments that have been used over the last month that have been made on behalf of StarBuds being okay to put into a neighborhood strip mall. Number one, StarBuds will have strong security and strict rules. Security measures don't change the fact how close the business is to kids. You can't secure perception. Kids will see it, smell it, and wonder it is. That is what matters most to all of us. Number two, StarBuds could add conditions like no visible signage or restricted hours. Conditions could help, but the underlying problem is the location is wrong. A dispensary does not belong between two daycares, under any circumstance, no matter what signage looks like or when it is open. Number three, other towns might allow dispensaries near businesses with children. Other towns are not Bartlett. We have a higher standard and families expect more. Following a lower standard elsewhere is not a justification. It is a warning of what not to do. Number four, this will bring in tax revenue that can be used for Bartlett and all its public services. No amount of tax revenue is worth compromising children's safety and community trust. Once we lose that, no dollar amount will ever buy it back. And number five, what about the fairness to the business owners at StarBuds? We're not asking you tonight to ban this business from Bartlett. We are simply asking you to locate it where it does not have a negative influence or impact on the children and the local community in that neighborhood. That's not unfair. It's a responsible governance. Put the vacancy, put the StarBuds in the vacant CBS building on Route 59, on Army Trail Road, or put it in the Brewster Creek Industrial Park, half mile west of Naperville Road. That will keep everybody happy. Dan Gunstein, you live in our neighborhood. Please do what is best for the neighborhood and what is best for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I'm going to botch this name, but I think it's James Pantos. I got it right? All right. Got something right today.
I want to do a little bit different than I did last time, is maybe take you through a request, to make a formal request of the board to create a, an innovative cannabis ordinance to be integrated into the village before you make a decision on anything of this nature, and to work with the surrounding communities who already have established and looked into these policies and practice, especially when it's considering a daycare facility in the same environment, or where kids play, or where kids congregate, or where they socialize, where they eat, like in the Wingstop, or you have the Orange Theory where women at nighttime are using that facility. You, he, the number changed a little bit. You said 50%. Check the record. Last time it was 70%, and I would probably suspect it's even higher. And I think they lowballed you on the 35 an hour. State law says that that facility can be opened from 6 o'clock to 10 o'clock, 6:00 in the morning, 10:00 at night. You have all these kids. There is no room along, and there's only one store difference. It's a common parking area. You have a parking area where there's very limited spots in front of the daycare center. You have to go around the daycare center to park where the other parking spot is, right next to Sherwood Williams, or go into the same parking area where these other yahoos are going to be coming to pick up their cannabis. And let's take a look at this, the type of clientele you're going to have. And this is a fact, is they, of the 70%, you've got to be 21 in the state of Illinois to buy. Do you know what the average age of use is? 17. So their clientele over here is not just getting it, and there's no regulations, only a limit on a daily basis of what they can use. They're mules. They're going to be picking up for other people and giving it to other people to use it. That's the reality. So it's an industry that is tainted in the first place. So I'm begging you, do the right thing and postpone this, or say no to this, and let them go somewhere else until you guys can establish a thorough investigation into what the other communities are doing to make sure that you're protecting your youth. One other thought, the trend in society ever since COVID is integration of technology, and technology is being used to integrate virtual offices, and virtual technology is now being used by the youth. And there are already studies over the last five years that there used to be a trend where kids would actually go out of their community to live because they wanted to not travel an hour to get to work. More and more people and more and more kids are finding opportunities online where they can stay at home and be in the community. You have a great community here. You have a lot of single-family homes, and keep it that way. All your daycare centers are a benefit to this village.
Thank you, James. Appreciate it. Are there any other speakers that would like to speak tonight? Please do so by coming up. Please do so by coming up to the podium, state your name and address for the clerk. Please keep your comments to three minutes.
Ben Bany, 1524 Long Metal Lane, Bartlett. Didn't think I'd speak today. This is my first meeting, and I can tell you this is pretty intriguing conversation. I'm going to start by saying I was a huge advocate for marijuana legalization in the state. I continue to be a huge advocate for mental health support for people in the state. What I am so confused by is the location of this dispensary, okay? No issue with having a dispensary in this city. I think that'd be great. Why are you putting it in between two preschools? That blows my mind, right? As someone who's a supporter of this, okay? And you hear these people, I don't have kids, okay? When you hear people like that talk about this and the danger that they're scared about, I mean, that's real, okay? Now, where I do take a little bit of offense is when people talk about the clientele. These are cancer patients. These are people with chronic pain and mental health issues. So I would restrict that yahoo's comment, please, and thank you. But again, guys, please think about this location thing. This is all it's about to me, and I think most people here. It's not about legalization, regulatory things, the clientele. It's about where you're putting it, okay? Really think hard about this. I really like that idea about having an ordinance, you know, before you start implementing. You know, there's rules and regulations for a reason, and I think the people of this town have really made their voice heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak to this topic? Please do so. Come up to the podium, state your name and address for the clerk, and keep your comments to three minutes, please.
My name is Beverly Jacobson, and I live at 733 Braintree Lane. What I'm going to read you is a letter that I did email to all of you today, and I don't know if you read it, but I'd like it to be on record. My family moved to Bartlett on Prairie Avenue in 1978. Then in 1987, we built a home on Braintree Lane and have lived there ever since. Our kids grew up on this street, and our entire neighborhood watches out for one another's property and kids. Our kids have since moved away, but my husband and I still call this our home. Now we see many new young families who are moving in as some of the older ones are moving away. And this takes me to the reason for addressing this issue. We are urging this village board to oppose the proposed zoning that will allow a Starbuds cannabis dispensary to open so close to a daycare center for a few reasons. The most important reason is the closeness to these young children. That's been discussed a lot. Secondly is the added traffic, especially on Braintree Lane. Because the people can't exit southbound to go east on Stearns, they all go to the north end of the shopping center, turn right on Norwood, turn right on Braintree to make a left to go. So you have a lot in that one area of Braintree. You get a lot of traffic from out of that shopping center to there. I lost my place. So we find the kids who ride their bikes there have enough traffic to deal with because some of it has sidewalks, some of it doesn't, but they're on the street. We also get traffic on our street going to the parking area for the people who come to walk or ride and go around Beaver Pond. So we have that traffic, and people there after they park and are done, they do U-turns and turn around to go back southbound. I love that one neighbor who lives right at almost the corner of Norwood and Braintree puts out one of those plastic lime-green flag kid things to slow down. And it even reminds me and everybody else that's so used to driving down that street, oh yeah, there's kids, we got to keep it slow. And there's also at that corner is a school buses, a couple in the morning and a couple in the afternoon. So we're not saying that we don't want a dispensary in Bartlett. The same thing everyone else has said. We are suggesting it to be more at an industrial location or a larger shopping center that is not so close to homes and not in a family-oriented strip center. Please, please, help protect the young kids in the daycare and on our streets. We thank you for the opportunity to reach out to you. This is so important for all the families in our neighborhood.
Thank you, Beverly. Would anybody else like to address the board tonight?
Jay Langfelder, 415 South Hickory, Bartlett, Illinois. I have concerns about the traffic and listening to the developer or the partitioner on Starbuds dispensary, 35 vehicles per hour. They're open 8 to 10, and you're talking about 490 vehicles each way on Norwood Lane, which has Dunkin' Donuts and McDonald's. Also, you have Dr. Hofmeister's office and the daycare center. So that is a major concern, 490 vehicles a day. And village president Dan Gunstein, you mentioned online services, and they could creep up even, even higher. That is one of the major issues as trustees. And when you're looking at developing businesses around the Village of Bartlett, you have to look at the traffic patterns. And Norwood Lane, that's going to be a funnel. You talk about Dunkin' Donuts and McDonald's, they're backed up. And when you're talking about 490 vehicles one day, it's just going to be even worse. And that's a major issue when you're looking at all these developments, all the way to West Ridge, to Penny Lane, and as far east past Devon, you're talking about traffic. And the Tiff District, the Lake Street, you've got to look at the traffic. That is a major issue with this dispensary. I'm not speaking against a dispensary. There's locations like CVS is now abandoned on Army Trail and Stearns Road. Perfect area. You have a drive-through already established there, but it's vacant. And that would be a perfect establishment for your dispensary. So that is my major concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Anybody else in the audience that would like to address the board?
I'm Carol Harrington. I'm at 757 Braintree Lane. I lived in Bartlett for 38 years, and my comment is to Starbuds. We're not saying we don't want you. We'd like you to look at some of the other places in our town, and I have a feeling the village would be very happy if you got another place in our town. So think about it. You'll make a lot of people happy, you'll have your business, you'll have your revenue, and there won't be any reason to have this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to address the board? Dominic, do we have anybody online?
No, sir.
All right. I'm going to close town hall. Is there any other questions from the committee? Does anyone have any objection to forwarding this on to the village board for a vote?
I thought we were doing, I thought the board was instructed to do some additional, staff was instructed to do some additional research on this. I don't think there's any. Is that true?
There's, we have all the facts, I believe, that we need to...
That's what I'm saying. I agree.
To some of the agencies that we reached out to, we spoke to 13 total police departments that have cannabis dispensaries in their jurisdictions. Excuse me, six of them having a daycare center within 1,000 feet. Some of those are a little different, separated by a roadway or in a different strip mall, but six that were within 1,000 feet. Two with bakeries, and five other local agencies with dispensaries that are in close proximity to Bartlett. The vast, excuse me, vast majority of police departments reported having no issues or concerns from a public safety perspective, strictly from a law enforcement perspective. No nuisance-type calls for odor loitering. Some of the agencies did have customer management disputes similar to what they would have at any other business. One agency had a complaint for a smell of cannabis for somebody that was smoking outside, and that was unfounded. And generally speaking, across the board, the police departments that we spoke to said initially they heavily patrolled the areas, were anticipating more problems, and that just didn't materialize over time.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions for the chief? So we'll send this on to the village board for a vote at our next village board meeting. That's all I have under building and zoning tonight. Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
First.
I make the motion.
Motion by trustee Dany, second by trustee Laporte. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Bannerman?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Laporte?
Yes.
Solinsky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.